Good evening and welcome to the Hopewell Valley League of Women Voters School Board Candidates Forum. My name is Joanne Held and I am president of our local league. Our league is dedicated to voter education and to increasing voter participation here in the Hopewell Valley. We welcome men and women who live in our community to join us in this effort. And we have a number of our members here tonight. If you're interested in joining our league, please talk to one of them or myself or over there and we'll tell you more about our league. We're happy to host this opportunity for our school board candidates to discuss with you the many issues facing our school district. We welcome the energy and fresh ideas that these candidates bring to the discussion. We have three of the four school board candidates with us tonight. They are vying for three seats that represent Hopewell Township. I would personally like to thank these members of our community for their willingness to serve in this important capacity. We welcome members of the public who are here with us tonight and invite other members of the community to watch this program when it is rerun on the local public access cable stations. This forum is airing live right now and will be rebroadcast on Comcast Channel 19 and Verizon Channel 32. The times of the rebroadcast will be posted on our league website in a day or two at hopewellvalleylvw.org. I will also be acting as your moderator tonight. I live in Pennington Borough which does not have an open seat in this fall's school board election. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates for office or political party. Any use of the league name or footage from the debate in campaign materials, literature, or advertising of any kind, including internet, cable, or television, has not been authorized by the League of Women Voters. As a courtesy to the candidates, please turn off all cell phones and other electronic devices now and please refrain from taking photographs during the debate. I'd like to now introduce our candidates. We have Darius Matthews, Elise Murray, and Adam Sewicki, and also Sarah Tracy who is unable to be with us tonight. The forum will have four components: opening statements, questions from the moderator, there'll be nine questions divided into groups of three, cross-questioning in which the candidates will be able to pose questions to each other. There will be two rounds of cross-questioning, and then closing statements. The order of speaking is, to be fair, the numbers were drawn by the candidates to determine the order of speaking for the opening and closing statements. For the other questions and answer portion of the forum, we will proceed in alphabetical order with candidates taking turns to begin each new section of questioning. Now, I'd like to read the statement from Sarah Tracy, as I said, was unable to be with us, but she asked me to please at least read a statement about introducing her. "My apologies to my fellow candidates and community members in attendance tonight that I'm not able to attend this evening's important event due to a conflict in my schedule. My name is Sarah Tracy and I'm running for the Hopewell Valley Regional School District Board of Education. My wife and I are parents of three children in the Hopewell Valley Regional School District. I am a Rider University graduate with a Bachelor of Science in Accounting and I'm an executive in the financial services industry with over 30 years of experience in accounting, finance, and operations. I have extensive experience working with all aspects of financial institutions and in leading teams to achieve common goals and initiatives for organizations. As a parent and a member of the Board of Education, I will vigorously encourage and promote policies and programs that strive for and continue to support high academic achievement in a balance with positive social, cultural, and individual development. I will work with and across groups to achieve fiscal balance, diversity awareness, and build bridges with all stakeholders. At the end of the day, we are all trying to achieve the best education, services, and community for our children. I'm confident that I can be an effective part of that process." So that's the statement from Sarah Tracy. So finally, we are ready to begin the forum. And again, I welcome the candidates. And the order for the opening statements that we drew earlier, we'll begin with Mr. Matthews, then continue with Ms. Murray, and then Mr. Sewicki. So I am going to turn it now over to Mr. Matthews for his opening statement.
Great. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Hopewell Valley and the students of Central High School for hosting us this evening. My family and I moved to Hopewell Township last year because we fell in love with the natural beauty of the area, the camaraderie of the locals' citizens, and also, most importantly, because it had one of the highest quality school systems in the state of New Jersey. I believe strongly that the success of local communities and its citizens are integrally linked to the quality of its public school system. Through having grown up in the Detroit area and visiting dozens of countries, I've had a chance to see firsthand how education can transform lives and communities. I also had a chance to see how policy decisions can impact schools as a board member of a K-12 school in New York prior to living here. As a father of three young children ages four, two, and two months, I have a vested interest in the long-term success of our schools. Having received my undergraduate and graduate degrees from the University of Michigan and Dartmouth College respectively, and spending over the 15 years in corporate America, I have a solid foundation of which to make difficult decisions that will be needed for our district to continue to improve. I would love to bring my passion for education and professional background to bear in serving our community through a seat on the Hopewell Valley Regional District School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
Thank you very much, Joanne, and the League of Women Voters for having us here. And thank you to my fellow board members for supporting me for these past three years. I am currently the vice president of the Board of Education. And in these past three years, I've learned an amazing amount of information about how our schools are run and what we can do to support our children in being the best that they can be and grow into future leaders. I graduated from high school, a high school very much like this up in North Jersey called High Point Regional, except we just had more cows there. I currently live on Silo Road in Hopewell Township. I pretty much feel like I'm inside Pennington Borough. In fact, the funny thing, I was on the Pennington Borough Council back in 2011. And just towards the end of my tenure there on Pennington Borough Council, I moved into Hopewell Township and therefore had to release my seat a little bit early. I graduated from Trenton State, which is now the College of New Jersey, so I'm dating myself. I majored in biology, pre-medical biology, minored in chemistry. I have a business concentration and graduate studies in secondary education. I am a real estate agent licensed in Pennsylvania and New Jersey for Callaway Henderson Sotheby's in Pennington. I have four children currently in our schools between my husband Brad and I. And we also have a daughter who attends Georgetown. Sorry, the thing is freaking out. I would really appreciate your vote to continue my work as a leader on the Board of Ed, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sewicki?
Yes, good evening and thanks to the league for sponsoring this event. I'm Adam Sewicki. It's been my privilege to represent Hopewell Township on the Board of Education for the past six years. During that time, the boards in the district have accomplished a lot and I hope that I've played a role in some of the more significant initiatives we've been able to enact. Some that come to mind are increasing access to AP and honors classes, implementing more co-curricular activities, implementing a one-to-one initiative, and bringing forward inquiry-based learning. We've created STEM academies, a performing arts academy. We've been able to expand our special education services, which has allowed us to keep more students within the district, which is a good thing. We've enacted a homework policy to help balance work and co-curricular time after school. All the time while doing this, we've had some very responsible budgets. We've passed a referendum and we're in the process of making some very significant improvements to our schools. I am a graduate of MIT and Villanova University. I'm an aerospace engineer. I'm a technical fellow for the Boeing Company. And I'm a very proud parent of three students going to school in the district, as well as a 2017 graduate who is now at Cornell University. So I've had a wonderful time working on the board and I request your support so I can continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we go on to our first round of questioning. In this round, I will pose a question to one of the candidates. That candidate has two minutes to answer the question, and then the other candidates have 30 seconds to add to their responses. And they'll take turns, so they each get a chance to have an extended response to a question, but then the others each time will have just 30 seconds, so don't think that they're just being really brief. That's what we've told them to do. We're going to begin with Mr. Matthews. The question: "The school district must prepare students to compete in the global marketplace. How well does the district currently do this and in what areas is improvement needed?"
Thank you. Okay, thanks. So the question, just with regards to how well the district says to prepare the students, I think by and large, it's preparing them quite well. Over 90 percent, with an over 90 percent graduation rate, students are going on to four-year colleges and getting opportunities to continue to grow as individuals and as citizens. They're also, as Adam mentioned, increasingly taking more rigorous AP courses in the community, I mean, in terms of gaining access and making sure that people, students are actually scoring well on those tests. I think it's very commendable. I think in general, one of the things that I think that schools need to continue to do, especially in Hopewell, is to continue to develop global citizens. We're operating in a more and more diverse economy, and I think as a school district, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that students are equipped to handle those, I guess, that kind of complexity. I like, one of the things that the superintendent has done recently, just to infuse cultural development into all aspects of learning. I think that that's commendable and something that should continue to thrive and do. But I also think that there's obviously still room to improve. As much as the school district has done, I think we should still continue to strive to find ways that we can reflect, see what's working, see what's not working, and try to be the model program in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
I do feel very strongly that we do an amazing job of supporting our kids and providing programming that allows them to do well at four-year schools in addition to going on to work in the global marketplace. We do, we have, as Adam had mentioned in his opening statement, we have really created an environment where kids can improve their access to more challenging courses and, I thought I only had 30 seconds, sorry.
Mr. Sewicki?
Okay. I agree with what's been said. We've been a district that's been on the AP honor roll because we have so many students taking APs and they're scoring so well. For our students who are more challenged, we have enacted programs to help them become productive citizens. They go out, start learning to work in our local community businesses. What we need to improve on is providing some programs for the students in the middle. We're very good at working the achievers and those who need support. We need to do more for our students in the middle.
Thank you. Our second question, Ms. Murray will begin the second question. And the question is, "What should the relationship be between the school board and the administration, and between the school board and the public?"
When you ask the question, one word just jumped into my head, and that's collaborative. And I feel really blessed, actually, to be in this school district and to be working with the Board of Education that we work with. In my orientation weekend for Board of Education, we met boards from all over the state. And all I kept hearing from these boards was, not every board, obviously, but many of them, and I'd say a majority of them, that things were contentious between the board and the superintendent, or the board, the administration, and the community. And I remember just sitting very quietly because I really didn't have anything negative to say, and I felt kind of bad saying anything really positive when they were so frustrated. So we do have a really amazing relationship, and I really think the best way to work together is by communicating, just with honesty, integrity, and respect. I believe we do that. I do believe that we can do a better job of making sure the community is really aware of everything that we do, streamlining the ways in which we communicate with them so that, you know, information isn't all over the place. But I think the best thing that I can say is that when I look at the way the world is functioning, or sometimes I want to say dysfunctioning, that political parties can't, you know, talk to one another in ways that we can get things done, I definitely feel like we, on the board, do a great job of walking the talk and supporting one another, supporting our students, and supporting our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sewicki?
Okay. When we join the board, we take an oath, and part of that oath says that our responsibility is not to run the schools, but to ensure that they are well-run. And that, I think, is the primary responsibility of a board member. I would say the relationship should be collaborative, as Elise stated. One of our main goals should be, what I describe as constructively critical, basically hold the administration to its responsibilities to ensure the schools are well-run.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I agree with Adam and Elise. I think collaboration is something that is fundamental, the fundamental role of the school district. But it should also be accessible, and I think that we should strive to reach out to all members of the community, from teachers, parents, but also non-parents, other taxpayers, just to make sure that they're informed of the critical decisions that are impacting them as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Our next question is directed, we'll begin with Mr. Sewicki. "In addition to serving on the board as a whole, board members also serve on committees. Which committee do you believe you could contribute most to and why?"
Okay. During my time on the board, I've been on just about every board committee. Currently, I am chairman of the Personnel Committee. I've done that for two years now, and one of the reasons that I do that is that I've had experience seeing what we've done in terms of implementing, for example, our Danielson rubric for evaluating staff. I'm familiar with some of our challenges in terms of staff attendance. Last January, we implemented a new program in terms of tracking attendance better, more or less to make the staff aware of what our attendance issues were, and that has dramatically improved our daily attendance rates. I have spent quite a lot of time on the Education Committee. I chaired that for three years. It's one I particularly enjoy because I'm very passionate about developing programs to help our students achieve. I'm also passionate about, as an engineer, looking at data. And I very much like to help the other board members and the administration review some of our data that we get from our achievement reports. We just had a report given to us by Dr. Tries, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, on Monday, and it made us very well aware that we have some challenges. We have certain cohorts of students who need to be addressed. Our special education students are economically disadvantaged students. They are not achieving to the same levels, they're not progressing the way the rest of our students are. So that's another area that I'd really like to stay involved with.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
For me personally, I think I would be able to add the most values on the Finance and Facilities Committees. I'm the Senior Director of Operations at a very large multimedia company where my job is to really talk to various people, operate within budgets, look at real estate across the United States, just to understand how we're best utilizing our capital.
Thank you. And Ms. Murray?
I'm currently the Chair of Policy Committee and the former Chair of the Education Committee. And I will say, I agree with Adam. The Education Committee is one that you really get insight into what's happening throughout the entire school district. One of the things I really appreciate is that we've put things into our programming like mindfulness. So as a health and fitness instructor and wellness coach, it's something I'm really proud that we instituted this year.
Thank you. And now we move into our next part of our program. This is called our cross-questioning. In this round, each candidate will have an opportunity to pose a question to one of the other candidates. We ask that they keep the question that they posed to within 30 seconds, and then the respondent will have two minutes to respond. And for this round of cross-questioning, we will begin with Ms. Murray. So if you could, pose your question and say who you're posing it to.
Since I've been working with Adam for such a long time, I think I'm going to talk to you because I think you need to have a chance to really let people know who you are. And I noticed that you mentioned that you are a former board member in New York. Having seen the curriculum here and some of the cultural diversity initiatives that we have, I'm wondering if you have a fresh idea into something that maybe we could do here in Hopewell?
Okay, thank you. So when I was in New York, I was on a board of a School of Learning and Communication Development, which is a K-12 school that's focused on teaching children across autism spectrum disorder. Part of, one of the things that we were able to do there is to establish some, I would say, postgraduate programs. It's a segment of the population where, once they graduated from school, it was very difficult for them to find, for some of the ones that weren't going on to college, to find opportunities to be productive members of society. So we were able to really put some programs in place to help the young adults really develop and transition into society. But one of the things, and without a formal agenda of how we can change the schools, I think one of the things that I want to do, and one of the things that, I don't think it's incumbent upon me to say that, you know, here's something that we could do better of, but what I would do is just ask questions. I think one of the most impactful ways to change and learn is, you know, just ask questions, understand why things are happening the way they are. And through those questions, I mean, you might be able to uncover things that might be able to change and things that we could do better. I don't think that education specifically is something that you can revolutionize overnight, but it's something that evolves over time, and it's something that, as we continue to grow as individuals, but also on the board, you gradually start seeing what you can change within the set of constraints that we have within our budget, but also within the laws of the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. I ask Mr. Sewicki to pose the next question.
Oh, okay. I'll ask a question of Ms. Murray. And my question is, what do you think are the attributes of a good, effective Board of Education member? And what are some of the things that you have done or plan to do to be a good and effective Board of Education member?
Thank you. A big piece of being an effective Board of Education member is showing up. It is obviously a volunteer position, and we all lead very busy lives. We all have many children and jobs. And making this your priority is a big piece of being an effective member. It was a surprise to me, but I was recently given an award for board membership. This award is a newer award, and I was the first in Hopewell, the Board of Education, to achieve it. Basically, what it recognizes is, in your first two years, that you get a certain amount of credits through the New Jersey School Board Association, that you attend orientation weekend, regional conferences, the annual conference, and local association meetings. If you want to really be a big part, the education and support is there, and there's so much to learn. I really hope to be able to continue my work because I feel like the first three years, you're really getting your feet wet, really learning everything. And then I can use everything that I've learned, especially a lot of the leadership work that I've been really focused on in this past year, to continue to do what's best for the kids. Finally, I think my role on the negotiation team for the five professional associations that we have in our district was a big learning process, and I really feel that I would like to continue that as our new contracts come up as well.
Thank you. And now I ask Mr. Matthews to pose a question.
Sure. I think Adam, I believe you're probably the longest-tenured board member. I guess you have one more term over, Elise. Can you talk a little bit about what you've learned during your tenure as a board member?
Sure. No, thank you. That's an excellent question. Having sat on several committees, I've learned quite a good bit of information about a broad range of topics that affect the board. I started out on finance and facilities, as well as edcom. I've been a member of the Policy Committee for quite a while. I think we've been very productive there. We've made a couple very good changes. I would say probably the most important thing I learned is how important it is for the board to be collaborative, both within itself as well as with the administration. When I joined the board, we had productive members of the board, but I wouldn't say at that time that we always had necessarily the common goals that are necessary. I think now our board has a much clearer vision of where we want to take the district and where the community wants us to have the district go. And I think that has been evidenced by the overall productivity of initiatives that we've been able to do over the last number of years. You know, if I look at my time there, the first couple of years, it took some time to get things going, but, you know, we were able to bring a homework policy online. That was very difficult. It took quite a long time. It was unique, it was new, but we brought it into being. The academies, I mean, they were challenging. We were bringing, at the time, choice students in from other districts. That took some effort, was not simple. But doing the referendum, that was quite a challenge, but it was the right thing to do, and the board had a very clear vision of how it wanted to do that. And by doing the referendum, we're doing some very positive things in a very economical way.
And now we move back to the more straightforward questioning, in which I will ask a question. And just to remind you, the first respondent gets two minutes and the others have 30 seconds. And at this point, it's Mr. Sewicki's turn to field a question. Yes, and so the question is, "Bullying has become a part of our national discussion and Hopewell Valley is not immune to this. What is the role of the school board in creating an atmosphere where harassment and bullying are greatly reduced?"
That's an excellent question. The state's harassment, intimidation, and bullying law came online during my time The state's harassment, intimidation, and bullying law came online during my time on the board. It's enacted quite a change in procedure. And to some extent, it's something that our board struggles with because bullying as defined under the HIB law is not what we traditionally thought of as bullying. So that, that's been some, a source of confusion. And I think part of the role of the board has been to work with the administration to make sure that we have policies which are compliant with the law, but are also applied in a rational and consistent fashion. One thing you'll notice is we, we don't necessarily impose strict absolute consequences for certain actions. We prefer to have some flexibility given to our administrators so that they can use their education, their judgment, their experience to help our students learn from their mistakes so that they won't continue to occur. The other thing is, as a board, I think we have worked with the administration to provide the types of examples and made, made clear with our messages about the importance of respecting each other, of valuing each other's diversity of opinions, national origins, et cetera. We have a very important initiative in character education now, and I think that's a key component to help trying to reduce these incidents of bullying and such in our schools. In terms of a role within, as a board member, we do review all the HIB cases by law. So, you know, our administration does review that. And we've had cases where we've had appeals and we hear them. And we see whether or not additional action is warranted.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
From my perspective, I mean, I, I think that, you know, one of the roles of, of a school district is to, to, I mean, have students be global citizens. And as Adam mentioned, I mean, it is about accepting each other's cultures and each other, and celebrating each other's differences. But I, I think it's also important as, as we continue to evolve and, and the HIB laws become more, more structured and, or grounded within the community, that we do have some initiatives set up for, for, for parents so that they're, they're aware of, of things that they can do at home that can, can help reduce the instances of intimidation and bullying.
Thank you. And Ms. Murray?
Just to kind of spring off of where Adam left off, one of the definition, the, the key definition of, of HIB is that there's a perceived characteristic in the, in the confrontation. And, and we all have a problem with that. I know the state's talking about changing it, but we've already talked about changing and including policies that, that aren't just limited to that as far as investigation and making sure that we educate kids on how to, or staff on how to do things better.
Thank you. This next question is directed first to Mr. Matthews. For the 2016-2017 school year, the school district also reported 11 instances of violent behavior and 21 instances of substance abuse. What more can be done to counsel students involved in these behaviors and also to protect the student body from be, being victims of these behaviors?
So, I mean, I, I think by and large, it's, it's, it's important that we, we reflect on these issues as, as they occur and understand, you know, what, what, what can really be done around a lot of these issues. I, I think that, I mean, a lot, we, we need to make sure that we have policies and initiatives in place so that we, we can, we can inform and, and help educate parents to help eliminate some of these issues. But I also think that, you know, you know, with 11, 11 instances of violence and 21 instances of, of substance abuse, it's, it's, I know that those, those numbers are, I believe they're, they've increased over the past year, and, and some of that might have to do with, to more accurate reporting. But I, I think it's also important that we take a, a longitudinal view of how exact, how exactly the current policies are, are progressing. I mean, is this something that is, is, is something that, that is becoming more and more of an issue? Or is this something that, you know, we're actually doing a fair, a fairly good job with the current policies that we have in place? So I, I do think that it requires a little bit more reflection on the current policies, but also just taking a, a look back and see, really examining each of those instances just to understand what are, what are the circumstances that surround them and what we can do in each of the, what can we learn from each of those instances.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
Unfortunately, those numbers don't really reflect that there are a number of the infractions that were done by a few students. So sometimes it doesn't reflect that, and I didn't want to scare the public on what's going on. I do believe that our cultural competency is the right place to improve what's happening in the environment of our schools. So if children feel less stress, they feel more grounded in their school, feel more connection and purpose, perhaps we can reduce the vandalism and violence and drugs.
Now, I think we should be continuing to do some of the work that we've done over the last few years. We've got SAC counselors now at the high school and at the middle school to help our students who are having some struggles within these areas. We've been doing staff training to make them more aware of some of the signs that they need to look at in terms of our students. And we've recently revised a policy to address vaping in terms of its implications with regard to smoking. So we'll continue to do that. We're also looking at some of the programs other districts in the state have enacted.
Thank you. This next question is, we'll begin with Ms. Murray. As our school population and educational needs change, it may be prudent to rethink the way that we use our buildings. Do you have any recommendations for consolidating or repurposing space in our buildings?
So much of the repurposing of our buildings has been done and we are currently doing under the referendum. If our population should increase, I do believe we have the ability to create more space where we need to. For example, you know, libraries have now become media centers. So kids can take their, their one-to-one Chromebooks and take them into the media centers. Under the referendum, we are enlarging space in our cafeteria, which is really well needed because our students all have lunch at the same time. There's, there, there's been investigation by, by our administration and the board for some of our older buildings. For example, the administration building that we spend a lot of time in is really in need of a lot of work. And through the, the research that they've done, it really makes sense for us to hang onto the building because it's really cost inefficient to try to outsource office space or find space for our, our transportation, which is housed on that campus. So I think much of what, what needs to be done, we've been really looking at a long-range plan and also keeping an eye on what happens with the, the population changes that they're slating in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Sewicki?
Yes. A few years ago, when we had some demographic changes, we had a case where at Bear Tavern, we had a significant reduction in the school population. And there was talk at that time, do we go ahead and consolidate elementary schools? What the, the board and the administration did was, we developed STEM program, which helped even out the population amongst the schools. So I think compared to where we were three years ago, we're in a much better place in terms of making efficient use of our space.
Thank you. And Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, as Adam mentioned, I think it's important as, as we're talking about, you know, just uncertainties with regards to the population of the community, we kind of, you know, really take a second look at, you know, repurposing or consolidating space. I think it's something that, I mean, if, if there is an instance where we think that we have a short-term, I would say, surplus of, of space, we should really think about, you know, what, what it could be an alternative use. I mean, having the STEM program, I think that's a, a good example, but I think that we should think about other, other areas that we can really reduce or reuse the space.
Thank you. And now we return for another round of cross-questioning. In this round, each candidate will have an opportunity to pose a question, and the respondent will have two minutes to answer. And in this round, we begin with Mr. Matthews.
I think, what, I guess this is for Elise. I guess from, from your perspective, what do you think is, is the biggest challenge that is facing our district in the coming years?
I think our biggest challenge is likely what a lot of people are challenged with in their own homes. It's increasing costs of health insurance. It's increasing costs of staff and salaries. It's increasing costs of supplies and trying to find ways to maintain the, the amazing opportunities that, that are there for our kids at our schools without having to break the budget. So finding ways to cut areas in the budget without losing the, the opportunities for our kids. One of the ways we've done this in the last few years is they were looking to change the way we have kids learn to collaborate and more of a student-centered learning in educational programming. So they were looking to technology to help support that. So initially, we thought this was going to be a very expensive way to go. As it turned out, because of increasing costs of, of maintaining old equipment and the decreasing costs of things like Chromebooks, which are very affordable, we were able to save the district between $250,000 and $300,000 by going one-to-one rather than it being something that would break the budget. So I think we'll just continue to find ways to, to work smarter, green initiatives to reduce costs of energy, trying to bring revenue into the district. For example, the solar panels that we have on our roofs that PSCNG has installed, and we get paid back about $50,000 to $75,000 a year. Thank you.
Ms. Murray, it's your turn to pose a question.
Oh. I think this is probably a looming question, and I think you're the right person to ask it to. You know, our, our constituents often say, you know, I spend X amount of money on my tax dollars. What are the things that you think the school is really providing for those tax dollars?
Okay, interesting question. Okay. I, I think we're providing expertise and guidance. I think we have a very well-structured program in terms of our academics. One thing I think we really do a good job of is providing the choices for our students. We have a variety of classes and a variety of subjects at the high school that we offer. For instance, within the county, we're the only high school that still offers an automotive shop. So I think that's a great thing. Not every student aspires to go to a four-year college, so having some options like that are an excellent thing that we can do. We're evolving what we have in our other electives. We have woodshop, but we also have things in terms of other STEM options, which, you know, we continue to evolve those programs to meet the, the interests of the students and the, the evolving marketplace that we have. Let's see. One thing I'll say, I mean, we've, we've managed to provide additional options but for co-curriculars. One initiative we did was, we eliminated the activity fee. And while that had some impact to us financially, we have a much larger number of students now active in some of our co-curricular activities. And I think that's very important in terms of allowing them to explore their interests and also to tie them into the school community. If they have activities to do after school, it's definitely known that that's a good thing. It helps prevent them from getting involved in certain negative aspects like, like substance abuse. So things like that, we've done that for that reason, to help draw people into the community, into the school community, make them feel a part of what they're doing here. That's a big part of it, too. I think most of our graduates feel very proud and, and have had a rewarding time here in Hopewell by the time they graduate.
Thank you. And it's, Mr. Sewicki, it's your turn to ask a question.
So I'll ask a, a question of Darius. And so one of the things we've struggled with as a district and our board is the recent events in terms of standardized testing. Years ago, we had the NJASK. We switched over to the park examination, which has been much more controversial in the, in the district. We've had some issues with students refusing to take the test. So my question for you is, what are, what's your philosophy in, with regard to state-manded standardized testing? And what can we do to improve participation rates?
So, I mean, I, I think that standardized tests are just one measure of many that, that kind of show the health and, and of the, of a school district. I, I mean, as to your specific questions about what we can do to, to really improve participation of, of those tests, I, I think it really involves reaching out to parents and really educating them, you know, what are these tests for? How, how are, how are students benefiting from these tests? I mean, they, tests, I don't, I don't think should be one-sided just so that, you know, I would say administrators are, are the only people that are receiving information from those tests. But I think we should also say, you know what, these tests are valuable for the students too. It allows them to see where they are relative to their peers and where they're at in terms of college readiness. Should that be something that, that they want to strive to continue to go, go towards in the future.
And now we move to our last round of questioning. And before I ask the first question, I need to, I need to be educated. Mr. Sewicki, you used the term co-curricular in your, in your answer. Is it what we used to call extracurricular?
Yeah, so it can, it includes athletics as well as clubs and other types of activities.
Okay, so it's the broad spectrum of other activities.
Exactly.
Okay, then I will, okay, fix my question so I ask it properly. And this goes to, starts with Ms. Murray. Again, we have two questions for the first answer and then 30 seconds for the others. And the question is, what do you think is the appropriate role of co-curricular activities in public education today?
When I think about like my philosophy of education, I would say that the most important thing that you can do for kids is provide them with a love of learning. And in addition to that, provide them with opportunities to look, to try, to test the waters on things while they're young. And that's why we just, we strive so hard to like find ways to, to manage the budget and cut in places that we can so that we don't have to reduce the activities and clubs that we have for our kids. Just Monday night, I think we had eight different new clubs and co-curriculars that, that we approved. And it's, it's great because a kid will come up with an idea of the fishing club or the Super Smash Brothers Club, and they find themselves somebody, a teacher or, or a support person to, to support them and to be their, their advisor. And then they come to us and they say, could we do this? And we want to say yes. We want to say yes to just about everything. So I think that's the main role of, of our co-curriculars, is to ignite passion for learning, to give the kids something to look forward to, to go to school, to feel like they're part of the school community because it's where they spend a majority of their time, 180 days of the year. We should make it a place that the atmosphere is safe, it's exciting, and there's something in it for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Sewicki?
I think one of the key attributes that I've seen benefits from co-curriculars is developing leadership skills. You've heard our generation of parents being referred to as helicopter parents because we're always hovering. We're not allowing our kids to as helicopter parents because we're always hovering. We're not allowing our kids to grow on their own. And I think, I've seen so many great things from our students in our clubs, really showing leadership of establishing new clubs, learning how, the skills on how to be a leader in our activities. It's where they can really, they can learn to fly on their own.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I agree with both Elise and Adam. I think co-curricular activities are things that really help build the community. But I also think just by, I mean, having high participation rates, I mean, they're, I mean, having access to them, but also I think those co-curriculars and being able to have new ones are what really drives innovation and change and growth in schools.
And the next question begins with Mr. Sewicki. Hopewell Valley is blessed with a very active and educated citizenry. How should we use experts in the valley to reduce costs and improve the effectiveness of our school district?
Okay. Well, one way we do that is through participation in organizations like the Board of Education, but there are many others such as Hopewell Valley Educational Foundation, Recreational Foundation, et cetera. And really, one way that they help us is through their activities by communicating with the district and understanding its needs. For example, we were able to make use of some very wise and thoughtful people in the Recreation Foundation to essentially evolve Ackerson Field into what it is today. The district provided the funding for the lights, the stands, but the turf field was basically, essentially a charitable donation from the community. And the fundraising knowledge and abilities of the district, the financial knowledge of the district, its participants in the community are what enabled that to come to fruition. I think the other thing is, we make use of them through various programs we have. The STEM Academy has parent volunteers come, participate. I myself gave a presentation on aircraft to STEM Academy last year, and we had a paper airplane contest, for example. Things in that nature. We make use of them. One of my favorite things that we do is the science fairs. I was very active at Hopewell and now at Timberlane, and we make great use of the scientific community there. They provide information on exhibits, and they really help stimulate the kids to do really interesting projects and learn a lot, something outside of the classroom. Many students who never thought that they would do something like that outside of the academic arena, but it really helps inspire them, and it's a great activity.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I think one of the beauties about being in this area is that the economy is so diverse, and you do have a lot of people coming that bring a lot of different skills to the table. So, I mean, as Adam mentioned, I think that the role in, you know, tapping into the local community is really important, especially when we're dealing with constraints, budget constraints, what are the ways that we can reach out to the community to kind of find step-gap measures and maybe find contributions or expertise that we might have to pay for or we have been paying for otherwise.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
I definitely need to make a shout out to our superintendent, Tom Smith, for being a real role model in our, not just our district, but in the entire Mercer County. The whole cultural competency initiative was really started by him, and he brought together parents, students, members of the community and administration, and teachers all together to support this initiative that really involves all of us.
Thank you. And the final question begins with Mr. Matthews. A board consists, excuse me, a board consists of individuals but acts as a group. How would you, as an individual, work to achieve consensus with your fellow board members?
So, I mean, this is something that I've done as my entire professional career. I was a management consultant for almost 10 years, where I helped Fortune 500 companies solve some of their most complex problems. And in doing so, it's really, as an individual, I think one of the things, you're more powerful in generating change, and not by coming up and saying that you have the right answer, but by really asking questions, learning more information, talk to the various people within the community. I think it's important that, as within the school district in particular, I mean, you really have to listen to all the different stakeholders prior to making decisions, students, teachers, parents, non-parents, administration, understanding what are the common goals, what is the vision, what are we actually trying to achieve? And really taking a step back to, you know, what, based on all of these inputs and based on what's important for everybody, how do we come up with a solution that meets the needs, but meets the needs that we're currently trying to address within the constraints that we're operating within? So, I mean, in summary, I mean, it's really more about, you know, asking questions, making sure that everybody has a voice and feels heard prior to making very large, complicated decisions. But really, I mean, also just, I mean, sometimes there's going to be winners and losers in some decisions, but, I mean, it's important to make sure that everybody has a voice, feels heard, and make sure that, you know, they contributed. And if things don't necessarily go their way, the first time, it's really making sure that, you know, next time, I know that the decision-making criteria that this body is following is consistent with my values and I understand how they're approaching things.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
Fortunately, I do feel like we behave this way on the board, so I don't have to do a whole lot to shift that. However, I would say that what we all do is, we share a respect for one another. We appreciate the knowledge and skills and gifts that come with each of our board members, and we come from a place of integrity. At the end of the day, you need to be a voice of reason. You need to be able to listen to someone that you might not initially agree with. And at the end of the day, even when you don't agree with somebody else, but you come to some kind of common ground, you usually end up with what's best for kids.
Thank you. Mr. Sewicki?
I absolutely agree with what you've both said. In my time on the board, I think one of the areas we've improved the most is listening. We have open minds. We respect each other. We speak openly. We're willing to express our opinions. We're not afraid to do that on the board. One other thing I think I'd say we've gotten better at is making sure that we have all the information that we need, that the administration has vetted what it's bringing to us to support, making sure it's gotten good communication with the community, and make sure we have the broader community perspective as well. So all those things are important as we try to build consensus.
Thank you. And now we move to our closing statements. The closing statements will be one minute long. The order is based on drawing of numbers earlier in the evening, so we will begin with Mr. Sewicki.
Okay. So thank you. Again, I appreciate everyone's attendance. I think it's been a very excellent discussion, and I've really enjoyed my time on the board. I think I've been an effective board member over the last number of years. I think the district is in a very good place, but we do face a number of challenges. We're doing our referendum projects. We have to pay for them. We have other budgetary pressures such as health insurance. We need to continue to work to make sure that we're being financially responsible to our taxpayers. And I think my six years of experience on the board make me a very good candidate to be able to continue to do that work. So I request your support on November 7, and thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Matthews?
Thank you again, and thank you to the students of Central High School for hosting us. I really enjoyed being able to talk about the issues and hearing from Elise and Adam, and sharing my perspectives as well. When it comes to the school district, I think, I mean, there's been so much great work that's been done over the past six, seven years, and probably definitely longer. But I think the school district's in a very good place. But there are some difficult challenges ahead, especially when we think about, you know, the, maybe the increased population growth. But I think, I mean, just reflecting on my own personal values, coming from a family where it was important to give back to the communities and which I'm a part of, I mean, it's, education is something for me that I feel strongly about. And I'm hoping that the voters of Hopewell Valley will see me as a representative on the school board.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
Thank you. As the current vice president of our Board of Education, I really appreciate if you would support me in continuing into my second term in leadership. With a background in health and environmental science, graduate studies, and secondary education, having lived and worked in Hopewell Township community for over 23 years, including years of experience on the Pennington Borough Council, on the negotiation team for this current board, and having four kids in the schools that I fully, I feel so strongly about the gifts that are here for them, and in continuing to make it the best place for them to be educated and become the future leaders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would personally like to thank all of the candidates tonight. I've thoroughly enjoyed your discussion and learned a lot, and I'd like to ask the audience to join me in thanking you. I also thank the audience for being in attendance tonight, and to thank Sarah Tracy for providing a statement earlier. I also would just like to mention that tomorrow night, our league will host the four candidates for Hopewell Township Committee. That forum will be held at the Hopewell Township Auditorium on Scotch Road beginning at 7:30 p.m. The forum will also be broadcast on the local public access TV stations. You can check our website or Facebook page, which we just set up today, after tomorrow night to get the schedule. And finally, don't forget to vote on November 7. Thank you.